Okay, it is 9:00 AM on Thursday, September 19th, 2024. This is the special organizational meeting to be held. To begin with, I will call the meeting to order and we do have a quorum. We have nine directors here. We have two on speakerphone. So if you're able to stand, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We will now move into the board vote. We will be taking nominations. A little preface here is we are voting for Vice President due to the resignation of Alan Schlemmer due to his severe accident that he had a couple, three weeks ago. So we will be voting for Vice President. And I received a resignation this morning for Secretary. So we will be taking nominations for that as well. So we are moving into the special organization meeting. We will do the Vice President first. The floor is open for nominations for Vice President. Jack? I have Tim here.
Yes, President Larry, I would like to nominate for Vice President Rudy Grom.
Okay. Dennis?
Yes, I would like to nominate John Chatten.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, Rudy, do you accept? Are you willing to accept the nomination for Governing Board Vice President?
I accept the nomination for Vice President.
John, are you willing to accept the nomination for Governing Board Vice President?
I'm still kind of thinking about that.
It's a yes or no.
Yes, as the board wishes.
Okay. Nominations are now closed. We will now vote. The teller will distribute the ballots. Have all voted who wish to? Christine and Dennis?
Still working on it.
Christine?
Yes, I have sent my vote as Director.
Okay, we're using electronic voting or whatever you want to call it. But that's how we're handling our people who are offsite. Just so everybody knows, a majority has to be achieved by the candidate in order to become Vice President. So that would be five votes. Dennis, you making progress?
Yes.
Dennis, you just have to, Dennis? You just need to send a text to Karen's phone number. Cell phone number, her cellphone number. We received it.
Good. Sorry about that.
No worries, it happens. I have received the tallies. There were nine votes cast. Director Grom received five and Director Chatten received four. Having received a majority of votes, Director Grom has now been elected Governing Board Vice President. So congratulations. Okay, we'll start the process again. And I should point out that I received Director Williams' resignation as Secretary today due to her personal reasons. So we wish her well and thank her for her service as Secretary to date. Yeah, oh yeah, she'll still be around.
I'll still be a Director.
Yeah, she'll still be a Director, yes. Okay, we are now going to open the floor to nominations for Secretary. Are there any nominations? Okay, we have a joke. Director Pajaskowski, are you willing to accept the nomination for Governing Board Secretary?
Yes.
Okay, any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate John Chatten.
Director Chatten, are you willing to accept the nomination for Governing Board Secretary?
Fine, that's fine.
Yes, okay. Any other nominations? Okay, the four nominations are now closed. We will now vote. A teller will distribute the ballots. Have all voted who wish to do so? Yes. Okay, we're waiting for one offline that we're waiting for. Teller will now count the ballots. We have received nine ballots. Director Pajaskowski received four votes. Director Chatten received five votes. Director Chatten is the new Governing Board Secretary. Congratulations. What, here's the other one. Okay, if there are no objections, the special organizational meeting is now closed. Any objections? Okay, meeting is closed. We will now move into our regularly scheduled programming. I'll call the regular board meeting to order. It is 9:12. We will do the Pledge of Allegiance again. Nobody has left the room or online, so we still have a quorum. I will read the meeting procedures. The Governing Board conducts all of its meetings in compliance with Arizona Open Meeting Laws per Statute 33-1804 and in concert with Recreation Centers of Sun City West Bylaws, Policies and Standing Rules. Parliamentary procedures, as outlined in the most recent edition of Roberts Rules of Order, will also be followed in board meetings as appropriate, consistent with Bylaw 3.07, entitled Procedures for Owner-Member Meetings and Standing Rules Number Two and Number Three. All questions and comments are to be directed to the Governing Board President. All comments are entertained at the discretion of the Governing Board President. Speakers shall state their name and member number and speak in a courteous manner. The Governing Board President may limit commentary time and the number of commentators or speakers on any issue. The Governing Board President may also redirect commentary at individual agenda items to the general guest comments agenda line items, except when the board has discussed the agenda item and a formal vote is to be taken. All fire and room safety precautions and regulations are strictly obeyed at all meetings per the guidance of the Arizona Fire and Medical Authority. The Governing Board reserves the right to adjourn any meeting if the safety of the board, meeting attendees or others, is deemed at risk or if there is too much disruption to continue. After one verbal warning by the President, the board also reserves the right to ask any meeting attendees to leave any meeting should their behavior be deemed dangerous or unacceptable. Disciplinary action may follow. And with that, we'll move to Agenda Item 2.0, Approval of Minutes. The June 20th, 2024 Annual Owner-Member Meeting Minutes are, have been written. Unless there are objections, they will be accepted as written. No objections, they are accepted as written. We'll go to Agenda Item Three. And this is Arizona Fire and Medical Authority Fire Marshal Robert Olmstead will address the room. Thank you.
Good morning. As has been noted, my name is Robert Olmstead. I'm a Fire Marshal for the Arizona Fire and Medical Authority. Our Fire Prevention Bureau was asked to come in and review the meeting room a couple of months ago and to look at the capacity of the room and whether or not that should be recalculated and to give some guidelines for the safety of the room during meetings. And I think that was a result of a rather crowded meeting earlier in the year. So after having looked at the room, we have calculated that the capacity of the room is 107 persons and have given that update to be posted. I believe that it has. And also, one of the guidelines that I've given as part of this update is that the aisle ways along the side of the room, the aisle ways in between the seats, and also the low wall at the back of the room and the counter at the back of the room are not for sitting, standing, leaning, et cetera. Those are as wide as they need to be per the fire code and building code for safety as an exit pathway in a time of emergency. And so anybody sitting on the walls, sitting on the counter at the back or standing, sitting, leaning in the aisles would be in the exit pathway and would constitute an impediment to people needing to leave the room in a time of emergency. And one thing I always like to note when I talk about fire safety, building code and fire code, is that especially in terms of the fire code, it is very proactive and not reactive. And what I mean by that is that we don't have any fire code except a number of people were injured or lost their lives at some time in the past. So these guidelines are not something that somebody just decided was a good thing. It was something we've determined after the fact caused the loss of life during an emergency at some point in the past. So we appreciate compliance with those rules and I believe they've been posted. And at this point in time, I'm happy to entertain any questions if they exist.
Any questions from the board? No? Any questions from the audience?
All right. Thank you very much.
Any questions online? No? Okay, thank you sir very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we will move to new business, Section Four. The first item of business is to introduce our new General Manager, Stephen Erno.
Thank you, President Larry. So I feel like I've been introduced many, many times, but thank you again. And I do again want to thank the Governing Board for the opportunity to be here. It's something that I think is a great fit for myself and looking forward to doing things that will move the organization forward and making sure that we are providing the best possible services for our residents. I want to thank the staff. They've been very welcoming and as well as even just community members that I've come across. So again, thanks for the opportunity. Excited to be here. It's been a great three weeks-ish that I've been here so far. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Yeah, I think we got all the meetings covered now. So you've been introduced. Okay, any questions for Stephen from the board, from the audience? Okay, great. 4.02 is the announcement of the Chartered Clubs Chairperson replacement. Again, due to the resignation of Director Schlemmer. I am putting forth to the Governing Board, if there are no objections, that John Chatten be the Chartered Clubs Committee Chairperson. Are there any objections? Okay, none. So welcome aboard as Chartered Clubs Chairperson. Director Chatten, he's getting a lot dumped on him today. He's the new guy. Okay, great. With that, then 4.03, our CFO, Clifton Swan, you're up.
Thank you, President Larry, and good morning Governing Board and Rec Centers of Sun City West community. Happy to present the August year-to-date financial statements. Just a reminder that our fiscal year 2324 audit is in the review stage and will be presented at the October 15th Budget and Finance Meeting. So if you want to, you know, really dig into the numbers, show up for that meeting. But let's talk about fiscal year 2425 right now through August. Okay, so just to kind of give a quick summary of what we're going to be talking about here. We talk about our monthly results compared to prior year and compared to budget. And we do that in the income from operations. And then we do the year-to-date at the same time or right after that, same thing, year-to-date versus prior year and versus budget. Then we move down in the capital section where we talk about APFs and investment performance, our reserve fund investment performance. And then after that, we move into the capital improvement budget and talk about where we are at for the year. And then finally, my favorite thing to talk about, the reserve fund and our fully funded balance percentage. So getting into the income from operations for the month of August, 8,000 favorable to budget on approximately 1.7 million in revenue, right at budget for the month of August. And then down in the expense section, 180,000 in favorability and expenses. We do have some open seats, particularly in the golf maintenance area that is creating some favorability. We also are a little more efficient than we were last year in terms of overtime. So that's creating that favorability down in the bottom section. Utilities, we were chasing last year. We were behind budget last year because we just didn't foresee the amount of the dry weather and the amount of electricity that we would need to run our pumps and air conditioning units. So we did a better job this year of budgeting for that. We are favorable to budget. And then some of the other areas like landscape, repairs, supplies, legal and professional services, those are timing items that will come back the other way as we proceed throughout the year. But currently, 180,000 favorable on 2.231 million in expenses. We do operate at a deficit for the first few months of, actually the first five months-ish of the year. So half a million dollar deficit compared to 721,000 deficit budgeted or favorable of 188,000. Compared to prior year, good news, favorable on the expense area as well as the revenue. Revenue budgeted, of course, expense is favorable. Again, there are some timing items in there, but 137,000 favorable till last August. Looking at year-to-date, 22,000 favorable right on budget for the year in revenue at 3,421,000. And then in the expense section, again, you know, the salaries, wages and benefits is 117,000 favorable. I will say, we did budget for 89,729 hours year-to-date in the budget for August and we came in at 86,289 hours. So some of that's open seats, of course. Some of that's just being more efficient and overtime and things like that. But and then there's also with those open seats, when we did our testing, when we budgeted for health insurance, those open seats are also creating favorability in the health insurance area because we're not paying for those premiums. 260,000 favorable, again, timing on some of the other items. We'll keep an eye on those throughout the year. So overall, 282,000 favorable to budget at a million 83,000 cash outflow for the year and 116,000 favorable to prior year. 21,000 unfavorable on the operating expenses. Actually, 83,000 is the difference between the wages and benefits category. I will say, there are other positive variances which drop that 83 down to 21,000 in the other areas. And again, that's just due to timing. But all budgeted for 83,000. All right, moving into the capital-related section. Let's talk a little bit about APFs. So APFs are running behind last year in terms of transactions. We are favorable for the month of August. We were unfavorable for the month of July. Last May, June and July and August, we're pretty strong for home sales and we just haven't been able to keep that pace. This year, we anticipate or hope that those will come in other months down the road, but we don't have very much control over that. But 21,000 favorable for the month of August. And in our investment portfolio, we had 80,000 in investment income, so dividends and interest, and then favorable unrealized gain of 313,000. Compared to prior year, again, we're behind in transactions, but we put an increase in, $200 increase in APF fees. So that's creating a favorable variance of 62,000 in APF fees for the month of August. And looking down at the investment section, real good news here. I mean, just the portfolio is performing much better. And 423,000 favorable to last year. And then last year, we had 126,000 realized loss that we did not have this year. So looking at year-to-date, as I talked about, 100,000 unfavorable on APFs. We'll keep an eye on that. Hopefully that'll swing back for us. Right on target with our estimated reserve fund allocation, 187,000. And then unrealized gains of 803,000. And with that, 160,000 investment in income, we're up almost a million dollars in our reserve fund through the first two months of the year. Great news. So looking at the prior year, again, same story, ahead on APF fees. And our realized or our valuation is up approximately a million dollars in our reserve fund compared to prior year. So when I talk about the APF fees, you can see- So, when I talk about the APF fees, you can see, we have 164 APF transactions through August this year compared to 196 last year. So, we're down 16% in terms of transactions in our APFs. And then looking at the reserve fund valuation change compared to last year, 712,000 favorable. So, overall, we're in the black through the first two months, which is kind of crazy. That's great news. 48,000 versus negative 974 in the budget. So, a million, a little over a million favorable in our overall revenues, over/under budget. And then compared to prior year, same story, approximately a million dollars versus 944,000 loss last year, up approximately a million. Okay, switch gears, talk about capital, our capital improvement budget. So, this year, in our capital improvement budget, we have 9.9 million budgeted in capital improvement projects for this fiscal year. It's early days. We've only got through two months. We've been very busy. So, September, the September presentation, you'll see a pretty big change in this, but in terms of projects being completed. But we've got, with the projects that are PO'd and finished, we anticipate currently, as long as we come in at budgeted amount, we anticipate creating a positive 176,000 variance, positive variance in our budget compared to our actual spend. The details of that are here. So, if you want to take a look at that and you have any questions, please let me know. But the yellow highlighted items are completed, and not only PO'd but completed. And then the other ones are either PO'd or not PO'd yet. And then the totals, that total that. There was a request from our Budget and Finance Committee to include anticipated dates of start dates for these projects in a separate column, as well as where the variances occur, create another column showing the percent to the total variance. So, you'll see that moving forward. We're going to put that on this report. Okay, now allowances. So, allowances are 420,000 this year. So, these are unexpected capital items. 90% of the items that roll through allowances are items that are on our repair and replacement or items that weren't on our repair and replacement, but because of the cost of inflation and things like that, a piece of equipment might escape our reserve study but fail, and it creates over $5,000 item, and we have to now include that on our reserve study. So, but 90% of the items that are, that the funds are spent for allowance funds are just items that get moved up because we didn't get the useful life that we thought we would. And they would be, they would be on a future capital improvement budget anyway. But so far through August, there was a lot of talk at the end of the year about the RH Johnson pool. So, we spent some, we investigated that, spent some resources to make that right. We changed out the media and our sound filters, I'm sorry, and our pool filters from glass to sand because it turns out that the sand will work better for horizontally placed filters versus vertically placed filters. And we have to place them horizontally because of the space in that room. With that said, we put that on the reserve study for every five years, and we'll replace sand every five years on those, but 10,142 on that. So, what does all this mean to the reserve fund? So, not only to the reserve fund, but how healthy is our reserve fund? And we use our fully funded balance percentage to talk about how healthy our reserve fund. Policy says that 40% or greater is what our fully funded balance percentage needs to be. Industry standard is if you're 30% or better, you're doing well in your reserve fund, especially a community our size. So, with that said, last year, we ended the year at 51%. We have in our budget this year, even with completing a approximately $6 million irrigation project, we still anticipate our fully funded balance at the end of the year to be 47%. And I'm happy to report, it is early days, but we're definitely on target for that. So, it's great news, and I'm happy to report that. So, that concludes my financial presentation.
Any questions for our CFO? Yes, Director Rhodes.
Cliff, you had mentioned the APFs, actually, page 14, 16, and several other locations. There was recent legislation that is going to reduce the number of APFs we receive, and I think it's specifically through titles that are passed down through death and such. Do you have any idea what that number of APFs are that we're going to be losing legislatively?
No, but we are analyzing that. So, there's going to be two things that that will impact. So, it will be homes that, so if a home passes to a relative with the new laws, we will not be able to charge an APF on those. In the past, we were able to do that. So, it will be all the homes that pass to individuals or family members where the family member does not sell. Okay? So, we'll miss out on those APFs. What the unknown is, is now we give a refund as long as you sell the home within a year. So, if you pass it to a family member, the family member has to pay the APF, but they have a year to get a refund. We don't know how many of those family members will just now decide to keep the home. So, that's kind of a tough number to put a wag on, but we're going to analyze that and do a presentation. I'm thinking probably maybe December and just see where we're at for the year and analyze those transactions and compare to prior year and look at those. So, stay tuned for that. But yes, that just passed on September 14th.
President Leary?
Director Hurley.
Yes. Cliff, can you tell us which statute that is?
I don't know it off the top of my head, I'm sorry. Is Riley in the audience?
2119 or 2648? It's one of those two.
I can get it to you.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I believe. Okay. Director Chatten.
Yes, Cliff, just a curiosity, the depreciation being up 126,000, is that pretty much due to Grandview?
Yes.
Additional depreciation?
Yes, sir. Yep. And, you know, I don't spend too much time on that only because, you know, we're a nonprofit and it's a noncash entry. But yes, the increase in depreciation is due to the Grandview projects completion. Annely.
Okay, good. Director Graham.
Yeah, Cliff, just one question. Will the new law only apply to homes that have a death or whatever from this date forward? Or there are probably a number of homes that are probably in that state right now that will eventually transfer?
Yeah, so, we are using the cutoff of September 14th as the cutoff. So, that's the date where that we're using.
Any other questions for Cliff?
President Leary?
Yes, I was going to say Christine or Dennis. Christine, go ahead.
Thank you, President Leary. Just as a note for the governing board, the Budget and Finance Committee at that meeting raised a couple of the questions, specifically as Director Rhodes did, about the impact of both of those pieces of legislation. And to be fair to Cliff and the team, they really haven't had the time to analyze, but as he mentioned, they're expecting to come back to us at some point later in the year with their best efforts, not only on the wag that Cliff just mentioned, but also there's expected to be some kind of impact to our association's ability to collect late fees, late funds as well. So, they're looking at that, the association is. So, we can all expect the board and Budget and Finance will be looking for some sort of an update toward the end of the year. So, just as an FYI, if that was a question coming up in anybody's minds. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Horvath, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on, any questions from the audience? Let's take it there first. Anybody in the room? I see none, anything, nothing online. Okay. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next agenda item is 4.04, FY 2425 Capital Projects Update. Mr. Carl Wilhelm and Todd Paddy will present after that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, directors, audience. My pleasure to give a report basically of our projects in this fiscal year's budget. And starting July 1st, I will mention a few carryover projects as I go through the list. Carryover projects are simply projects that we've encumbered or started in the previous budget late, and they carry over into the new budget for project completion. So, starting off at RH Johnson, Social Hall hardwood seal, screen and seal, the project was completed on 7/10. The racquetball courts at the Activity Center on 7/11, and the Tamble tennis hardwoods on 7/12. The sports pavilion received a new sound system renovation. That was a carryover project from 2324, and that was completed on 8/7. Member Services awnings replacement, that project was completed the other day on 9/11. The agriculture club, storage building roof shingles replacement was an unexpected project that it'll be on the allowances. And that project was completed 9/12/24. Spa building, cool storage and small maintenance building foam roof restorations was completed on 9/13. The tennis facility resurfaced courts 1 through 16. That project is in progress. That project right now is going to be experiencing a little bit of a delay in keeping all three restoration projects on track the best we can. The vendor did have a little shortage on their crews due to weather in the Southeast Valley. So, we had a discussion this week. Both clubs, pickleball and tennis, have been notified of any project delays. And so, we're going to be adding about a week to the schedule for tennis. The pickleball facility wind screens replacement, that project is reported here as project in progress. It was completed over the weekend. The pickleball facility at RH Johnson, those courts will be complete tomorrow. Outdoor pool rubber deck warranty replacement, that project is in progress. The vendor has, is in the progress of fully removing all of the old rubber. They are probably 98% complete and starting the cleanup process today. The admin building flat roof restoration has roofers on that project right now, and it is in progress. And the parking lot number three in front of the social hall through to the sports pavilion is scheduled to begin Monday. Over to Palm Ridge, the aquatics building indoor pool, Wayne Scott tile is a carryover project. The project was carried over for approximately the last two and a half years, waiting for an opportunity after supply chain issues during COVID to be able to remove all the wall tile and redo it. The rubber decking project was the ideal timing, so we blended the two together and completed that project on 7/29. The outdoor pool deck renovation was completed on 7/26 while the indoor Wayne Scott was being done. And then we moved into the indoor pool deck, and that renovation was completed on 8/15. The pickleball facility had a shade canopy fabric replacement completed on 8/7. The fitness rooms, strength and cardio equipment replacement, those are two separate projects, but they were both completed on 9/12. And on 9/13, we had an open house to assist members in how to use the new machinery. The vendor that won that, the equipment is the same name brand, so Matrix for Matrix, but there's always new bells and whistles that everybody's trying to get used to. And we had approximately 100 folks come through the open house to get some advice on how to best use the machines, answer their questions. We'll be doing that open house again in October and look forward to the turnout. The pickleball facility resurfaced courts, we are scheduled to have those completed on the 23rd. I'm going to need either the 24th or 25th to get those fully wrapped up. So, the two out of the three resurfaced projects will be done by early next week, and then all of the vendor's attention will be on tennis, and we will get that caught up. Also, at Palm Ridge, the activities and aquatics building flat roof restoration, that project is scheduled to begin 9/26. Moving over to Beardsley Arts and Crafts Parking Lot Seal and Stripe, that project completed on 9/17. And then the aquatics parking lot Seal and Stripe will be complete today. Beardsley Park's perimeter fence and gates is in progress. We are approximately 50 to 60% complete. We will continue installing all the way through September and try to be ready for completion by the time events start October 1st. And they've already have their painter on the fence, starting to prime and paint that fence. Desert Trails, we had a carryover project there, the Pro Shop Patio Expansion Shade Canopy, all the pavers and the expansion of that patio were done last year or last fiscal year, but it took a while to get the long lead time for the actual shade canopy, and that was completed on 9/11. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Carl, can you, I think you accidentally skipped over Coontz.
Did I? Again?
Yeah. I wasn't going to say that.
It's two meetings in a row. That was a bonus, that's why. Okay, so, Coontz Softball Facility, the softball club put in a few requests, some we'll hear about during our committees this year. And amongst those requests, there was a request for a better system for ADA access to the bathrooms to the clubhouse. Right now, they'd have to come off the first base line and come all the way down to RH Johnson parking lot and go all the way around the, not RH Johnson, but the Coontz parking lot and get to the far side of the clubhouse. There was an opportunity to pour an ADA ramp directly from the ladies' side of the clubhouse, which is the RH Johnson Boulevard side, and we completed that last week on 9/13. And due to the amount of concrete for that, to get a full pour, we also removed the pavers behind the bleachers of first baseline. The club also requested that the first base bleachers be pulled back to create a safer and more ADA compliant front line to those bleachers. So, this all helped out the club, and it kind of eliminates a little work having to go into the next year's budget, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Carl from the board? Yes, Director Williams.
Yes, Carl. First of all, thank you for getting them in on time. Now, for the other side, we would always expect something happening at a time like this when we're replacing so much equipment. When the equipment was installed, it was interesting, people were noticing we had two of the same machines side by side. It wasn't a machine that was heavily used in the past, and questions were being asked of, well, why would we get two of those? But the next day, they got the answer because on the one machine, there was already a notice of out of order. Serious. There's another one of the new machines that already has a sign on it and has had for most of this week that simply says, patience, parts are on order. So, if you weren't aware of that, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Well, thank you.
To go back to your vendor.
Director Williams, I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm fully aware of that.
So, generally, I think they're being well received. The other, one other thing I would suggest, when you bring in someone from the outside to help train and people get used to the differences, you know, it opens at 6 o'clock in the morning. So, the other feedback I got is by 8 o'clock, when the guy showed up, I was already in the shower and ready to head home. So, is there any way that we can set up some other kind of training at a different, or does it have to only be done by the vendor?
I'll take that under consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Also, really glad to hear about the ramp for the softball field for the ADA accommodation.
Thank you.
One of the many things that the Properties Committee will continue to look at as we do our other inspections. So, thanks.
Thank you, Director Williams. Any other, anybody else from the board? Director Hurley.
Thank you, President Leary. Carl, the canopy at Desert Trails looks great.
Thank you.
The pavers and everything. When can we expect the furniture to be put out there?
I was already informed by golf that it was done, so.
I know they had it in the back. I just, we're going to play there Saturday. I just wondered if we'll be able to enjoy it.
I believe that's the responsibility of Nibody and Marcus, the assistant manager there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Christine or Dennis?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, any questions from the audience here in the room? Any questions online? No? Okay. Thank you, Carl. Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Mr. Patty, you're up next. Mr. Patty, you're up next.
Good, good morning. I think most of you, of all of you, have seen the update on Echo Mesa, so there's not too many changes, just a couple. All right, the Echo Mesa, this is Phase 2 of the Echo Mesa Irrigation and Turf Reduction Project, which is scheduled to start on Monday, April 7th of next year. And then Phase 1 of the project, that has already been completed. That was the planning phase of that. We did have $206,000 budgeted for that. We did come under budget by about $35,000. And then the cost review, as you know, we did put this out to bid to Heritage Landscapes Unlimited in Wadsworth. Wadsworth was the low bid at $5,066, and you can see kind of a breakdown of the project costs as you go down there. So, total project cost $5.5 million. So, last year, Grand View Landscapes Unlimited was the company that did that job. So, I was a little nervous that they didn't get that bid this year, but checking around, Wadsworth is a big company. They do really good work, so I have confidence that that project is going to turn out, just like Grand View. And then the project timeline, the only change on that, originally in August, September, we were going to change out the pump station. We moved that into next year, January of '25, because of the weather. As you know, it was hot this summer. We hardly had any rainfall, so the last thing I wanted to do is take a pump station offline for three or four days with those extreme temperatures and no rainfall. So, that's scheduled for January of 2025. To go back to December, we're going to have a public forum. This is the first public forum that we'll have on the project, similar to what we did at Grand View. We'll invite residents to come in, golfers and people to live around the golf course, and they can come in and ask questions, and they can see plans of what the desert's going to look like behind their home. So, we have that scheduled for the 5th of December, and then I just got confirmation, February, Friday 14th, we will have the second public forum here in this room. So, and we'll get all that, those notices out to the public ahead of time to remind them of the other forums. Project start date, I had mentioned that, the entire golf course will be closed during that period. If you remember last year with the Grand View project, we kept nine holes open, and so we decided, we did that mainly because of the restaurant and the teaching lab over there, too. So, since we don't have that at Echo Mesa, we're just going to close the entire golf course. Project completion date is set for Thursday, August 29th, and then we'll go right into our fall over seating last week of September, and the golf course will reopen on October And if you've played Echo Mesa, or you've driven by on the road, some of the street fronts, you've noticed some of the brown grass or dead grass. We've already started spraying out our turf lines. In fact, we sprayed about 18 acres in total around the golf course. Those are perimeters, street fronts, and road crossings, and by my calculations, 18 acres, we're going to save about 50 acre feet of water per year, and that's going to change again with the weather. That could go up or down, but that's my best estimate on water savings for the Echo Mesa project. And then during this time, I'd like to introduce or propose doing a turf conversion, and over on Number 9 Fairway at Echo Mesa, it's about 2 acres in size, and so we're looking at using this called Tohoma 31. It's the latest and greatest of the turfs that are coming out. Last year, it was Tiff Tough, and then they've had a few others in the past, but this seems to be one of the better varieties of turf that they've had out. Talking to superintendents that have used some of this, they're very pleased so far. And just a little information, we would not overseed this fairway on the first year. We would paint it. The good thing is it stays greener longer, and it greens up quicker, so if we are painting after it goes dormant, I think it's going to be a very short period. It could be maybe two months that we'd be out there painting. So, we'll do that for the first year, and then we'll determine whether we want to overseed it the following year, or if it's a turf that's going to be, if it's going to work for us out here. And then, once we get over to the Stardust project in 2027, maybe we convert those fairways, put that in there and convert all those fairways over there to this Tohoma 31, and then even going further. If that works, we have the Pebblebrook project coming up in 2029, and then we'd convert those fairways. All these golf courses are common verminogastris. There's really no need to convert the grass over at Deer Valley Desert Trails or Trail Ridge because they have an improved variety, which is called 328. So, I think that serves us well, so we wouldn't even touch those golf courses. The biggest thing with the Tohoma 31, of course, the late dormancy and early spring greenup, but it does save water, anywhere from 20 to 30% savings on water, and I think that depends on how you manage your water. If you're going to water your golf course, just like you normally would with the old turf, you're not going to see any savings. So, it's going to take a little bit of work and fine tuning on our end to achieve some of those higher percentages. I put increased maintenance up there. That's not a deal breaker. That just means we're going to have to go out and verticut the fairways a little more often, or vertical mowing, because it does get thatchy, it gets a little bit puffy, so you have to kind of get some of that organic material out of the fairways. And then the test for playability and durability, the big one is the durability. How does it hold up to all of our car traffic that we put out there during the winter months? And so, that's something we really want to look at, and that will determine whether we overseed it the next year or not. If it holds up real well and everybody likes the playability, which I don't think is going to be a problem, again, that will determine whether we overseed or not, so. All right, and just, we did use this sawd in a couple areas, or several areas, as you're on our common courses over at Stardust, some shaded areas, it is shade tolerant, so we'll keep an eye on that and see how that holds up. Pebblebrook, same thing, shaded areas, rough areas, high traffic areas. This sawd is a little more durable than some of the others, so I'm kind of interested to see how that's going to go through the winter months with the car traffic, and also the mower traffic. That's another big one. Our mowers out there tend to go over the same spot, especially on our cleanup laps on the fairways, or you're making the turns off of the greens and stuff on the Green Bank. So, we're going to be looking at that. Grand View, we put quite a bit down on some of the transition areas over there, and then, I know it's not a golf course, but both dog parks, large and small, we did that early on in about April, and so it did really, performed really well over the summer months, held up, so we're going to look at that. And then at the Back Dog Park, we're going to, this will be the second year that we don't overseed that, so we'll keep a close eye on those areas as we go through the winter Well, that was the last slide, so that concludes my.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. Any questions?
If I could, I just wanted to share a little information with you on, since we're talking about water conservation and the turf removal projects. Over at Grand View, a lot of people were curious of, are we saving water over there? And the answer is yes, we are. I couldn't use 23 last year as a comparison, so I went back to 22, just because 23 was our project here, so we had to have the water off for extended periods of time, so that's not a fair comparison. So, year-to-date, we've used about 52 acre feet less water. That number's a little bit different than it was last month. It was a little higher, I think it was 76 or 78 acre feet less. So, again, with our weather that we've had, the extreme heat, lack of rainfall, I would expect to see that go down a little bit, but that's not a big deal. The other thing, too, is our irrigation runtimes, our water window for our pump stations and also for our well pumps. In 2022, we're having to run our systems between 10 and 14 hour, I'm sorry, 10 and 11 hours, and that's during the summer months. That's peak season. That's when the demand for water is at its highest. This year, we're down to 7 to 8 hours to run those plants, so that's both the well pump and the distribution system. So, there's some big savings there as far as electrical, and I'm currently putting those numbers together right now. I've got all the APS information that goes back several years, so I'm going to put that on a spreadsheet, and I'll present that at a later time so you can see the electrical savings, which I think is going to be big.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions from the Directors on the board? Directors Novello and Horvath, any questions?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you, Todd.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, any questions online? None. Okay. Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
And with that, we will go to 4.05. This is for a sign approval for, over at Grand View, and the reason that this is before us as the Board is Policy L5, Statement 2.4, it basically says that whenever there are changes to signage, that the Governing Board has to approve that. So, Director Graham, I believe you have a motion.
Thank you, President Leary. Yes, I have a motion. I move that the Governing Board approve the Dave Arant Golf Lab signage at Grand View Golf Course as proposed per Policy L05 subsection 2.4.
Second?
Yeah, we have a second, Director Williams. Okay, the floor's open for discussion from the board. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion? Other questions from the audience? Questions online? Okay. Then with that, we will move to a vote. I will start with Director Graham. Yes, 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 you're voting for the sign, no, you are not.
Yes.
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 Director Novello?
I was slow to come off mute. Yes.
Director Horvath?
Yes.
Okay, and with that, it was a unanimous vote. It is approved. Okay, with that, we'll move to Agenda Item 4.06, which is the General Petitioning Guide Update. We discussed this at our workshop last week, and at that time, the decision was made to, rather than having a separate petitioning policy or guide update, that the topic would be moved into Policies L04 and L13. So, this, what I'd like to do for this one is just close this out and have it noted in the minutes that we are not going to have this discussion update, but we are going to move to discussion of the text into the two policies. Any objections? No? Okay. Then with that, we'll move into L4. I believe Director Hurley has a motion.
Thank you, President Leary. I move that the Governing Board approve engrossed language revisions to General Policy L04, authorized use of association property for civic political activity.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Director Williams, seconds. We're now open for discussion from the board.
Let me explain what happened?
Sure.
Sure. At the workshop, there was a lot of discussion. We actually have two Policies, L4 and L13, which deal with petitioning in common areas of the recenter property. And there was a paper drawn up about where particularly are considered common areas in Sun City West, and basically what I did was took the recommendations from the paper that we got and instituted them into L4 and L13. I removed some language to make it a little clearer in both, but basically, this is just adding in the petitioning language into the existing policy.
Any questions for Director Hurley? Okay, then with that, we will go, any questions from the audience here?
Shall I read it again?
Let me see if I have any questions online. No? Okay, yes, please read it again.
Okay. I move that the Governing Board approve engrossed language revisions to General Policy L04, authorized use of association property for civic political activity as redlined.
Okay, we will go to vote. I will start with Director Rhodes. Yes, you're voting for the motion, no, you're voting against it.
I vote yes.
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 Director Novello?
Yes.
Director Horvath?
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. We will make the update to L04. With that, we'll then go to Agenda Item Number 408, Revised Policy L13. Director Hurley, you want to have a motion?
Yes. I move that the Governing Board approve the engrossed language revisions to General Policy L13, authorized use of association property for association-specific political activities as redlined.
Do I have a second? Director Rhodes, seconded. Floor's open for discussion now. Discussion from the board. You want to explain again, Mr. Director Hurley?
Yes. Basically, we have two Policies, L4, which deals with civic political activities, and L13, which deals with association-specific activities. The legislature, two years ago, spelled out that there are certain things that associations have to provide for association-specific political activities. So, basically, what we did was took the Policy L13 and incorporated the general petitioning guidelines into L13. So, basically, L4 and L13 are very similar, the only difference being that L4 is for civic activity and L13 is for association-specific activity.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hurley? Okay, any questions from the audience?
I have a question. I was slow to come off mute.
Okay, Director Novello, go ahead.
Thank you so much. It's more just a general process question. This is very minor, two small spelling mistakes in there. Is that, does that require any sort of a revision to the motion, or can we just editorialize?
The, before the policy is...
Before we adopt.
Yeah, we'll correct all of the cosmetics and the spelling and the spacing and all of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted to ensure. Thank you so much. No questions for Director Hurley.
Director Horvath?
No questions.
Okay. I'll go back to the audience. Any questions in the audience? No? None online? Okay. With that, let's go with the vote. I will start with Director Graham. Yes, you're going to approve the motion, no, you're going to deny it.
Yes.
Director Hurley? Director Williams?
Yes.
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 Director Novello?
Yes.
Director Horvath?
Yes.
Okay, it's a unanimous vote. The motion is passed. Okay, we'll go to our last new business item, which will be the signature collection. The Governing Board is signing a pledge again this year. We're not going to do it, we'll do it after the meeting. We'll collect the signatures, but we will be doing that, and they will be posted. So, any questions on that? Okay. Then with that, I'll go to Director Comments. Let's start with Director Horvath.
First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to the new Vice President, Rudy Graham, and also the new Secretary, John Chatten, and welcome to the Board again. That's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Novello?
Same. Congratulations, thanks. No further questions.
Okay, thank you. Director Rhodes?
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I really want to commend John Chatten because not only did he walk in here this morning as his first meeting, he walked out as a board officer, he walked out as the chairman of the charter clubs, so that's a pretty heavy load. Congratulations, John. I wish you would have been here sooner.
Okay, Director Chatten, any comments?
What do you say to that?
Thank you.
I'm just, I appreciate the, I appreciate the opportunity to be on the Board. Thank you. Look forward to it.
Thank you. Director Pajcowski?
Congratulations, Rudy and John, both your positions.
Hey, thank you. Director Williams?
Yes, congratulations to both of you as well. Specially welcomed John. I know he ran a good campaign and was just 25 votes short at the time of coming on at that time, so I'm glad to see we got him on here now. I know he'll do a great job. Just a couple of things that I want to mention. Carl, just something for you. When we buy equipment, do we ever pay any attention to handicap usage of equipment? The reason I bring it up, we have a lady who's, for years, has worked out at Palm Ridge and is able to do all of her things. She has some deformities in her hands as a walker, but she cannot use any of the new equipment that's been put in. equipment that's been put in. Now, thank God, we have Beardsley and she's able to go back over there, but I just wanted to bring that up because it's, you know, and it's all due to the grippers on that, so that's...
It's not easy knowing who your audience is when it's very singular. Usually, we get it in a more mass or multiple comment form, so Sabrina and I had the privilege of meeting that person and have some discussions. Couple of those topics came up. Just remember that a couple of things happened through the process of getting new equipment. There is a review. We went and looked at the other manufacturers' equipment. Generally, every five years, that equipment looks a little different, feels a little different. The nuances are so minor that you just see that it's the same piece of equipment, but when it gets into the user's hands, they feel the difference. Some things are not solvable, and the best intentions are, if, for example, if we had all the perfect answers for Matrix, but Matrix wasn't the low bid and I ended up with Marathon equipment, you know, here we go again. It's, you know, this is a very difficult opportunity to meet everybody's needs. I think the equipment is very consistent, but I do have a few pieces that some of the folks that use it regularly are thankful that they have it old, but that old might not work out in the next turn of equipment at the other rec center. So it's just a hard, hard, you know, fill for everybody's needs.
Thank you. One other thing I wanted to mention, the Properties Committee has already had its first meeting. Next Tuesday morning, we start our walkthroughs and behind-the-scenes look as we do the very detailed look at the facilities that we have, and by that I mean all four rec centers. We will begin at 6:45 a.m. We will take about three hours at least in each location, and at the end of that process, we will be making recommendations to the governing board for things that we see. But as we go through that, Carl and Russ are our go-to guys that are with us throughout the whole thing. We greatly appreciate them, and just from past year's practice, we found it works well. For any maintenance things that we detect at those individual inspections, I will send those, an email to Russ within a day or so, so that he has them, and as is always in the past, within a week or so, all of those problems are corrected, rather than wait till the end until we get through the six weeks. So that's ready to start. Due to John's upward rise, the ladel, until this morning, he was going to be one of the members of my Properties Committee. Now, we know he's good, but we're not going to jump that, drop that one on him, too. So I will be searching for one more member of the Properties Committee, so I just wanted to let you know that there is an opening in case anybody in the audience is interested. Please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Williams. Director Hurley, any comments?
No comments.
Director Graham?
Thank you, President Leary. Yes, I'd like to thank the board for electing me as Vice President for the remainder of this fiscal year. It's indeed an honor, and I will do my best in working for the association and for the whole community. And as Director Williams just said, our golf committee has already met, and we're setting, we have set the dates for our tours. Everyone's welcome, and that will be eventually published prior to our next meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Graham. Mr. General Manager, do you have a comment?
Thank you, President Leary. Just want to say congratulations to you both and on your new roles, and again, congratulations to all of the board and looking forward to working with you all, and it's going to be a great rest of this fiscal year. So thank you.
Thank you. I have a public service announcement. I was handed this this morning. I feel like I'm on the 11 o'clock news getting handed updates, but this is an announcement from Cox Communications. They are going to be doing some work in our community. This came from our General Services Officer, Katie O'Grady. We have just been notified by Cox Communications that they are planning a complete outage that will affect a large part of Sun City West on April 27. According to the Cox representative, all Cox residential services, including internet, phones, and security, will be out from about 5 a.m. to noon this Friday in the majority of the eastern and northern part of the community. The project will allow techs to upgrade the Cox hardware to provide faster internet speeds. Cox states that they will be emailing their customers directly as well. The rec centers of Sun City West is not involved in this project, and we have no jurisdiction over this. We are notifying residents as a community service. Please contact Cox if you have any questions. So with that, I'll take questions from the floor.
Jack, would you go through that date again? I don't think you meant, when you said April 27.
Oh, did I say April? Sorry. I guess I'm thinking ahead. September 27. But then I still have a question because is this Friday? What's this Friday? Is that, is the 20th? Tomorrow's the, it's next Friday? Okay, so it's next Friday? Okay. Yeah, because tomorrow's the 20th. Okay, got it. Okay, April 20, it's April. September 27. Okay. Okay. Questions from the floor?
Good morning. Lynn Kellis, 129120. First question I have is for Kay. You said your first walkthrough starts next Tuesday at 6:45. What is the location?
We will start at Palm Ridge, meeting outside the entrance to the Aquatic Center.
Thank you. And the next item is just a comment I'd like to make to Russ and his team again. I just really appreciate how quickly they jump on issues that we have in the clubs. We were having some problems with some fans. I put in later in the afternoon a request for someone to come take a look at them, and by the time I got in in the morning, they were fixed. So thank you, Russ. I really appreciate that. That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? Any questions online? No? Okay.
These are open to the members of the five standing committees. That was the original intent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is someone else approaching?
My name is Alitha Delamo, and I am a resident here...
Rec card, rec card number, please.
Oh, 59669. I wrote it down. I didn't say it. 59669. It has recently come to my attention that surveillance cameras have been installed in the Stardust Theater, and when asked, the, one of the, the president of one of the clubs says, if I had any questions, we had to bring them to the rec center. So I do have a few questions. Why? Why was no one informed? Why was it just happened to be discovered by someone there? The comment from an employee was, not only were they in this theater, but they were also in other clubs. So are the residents in other clubs, have they been informed? And I'm just curious why the rec center believes that it's necessary to secretly surveil the residents. I remember some year, some time ago, someone asked about having cameras in the parking lots to protect the cars and people's belongings, and we were told, no, it was too expensive. And it seems to me that if you're going to put up surveillance cameras in a building where both members, residents and the public come, that there should be signs, and I believe there's Arizona laws that, that state that. Is this a kind way to treat our residents? I somehow don't think so.
Okay. Who would like to address that? Mr. General Manager? Hate to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. Well, and thank you, President Leary. So he just asked, President Leary just asked if I was aware of these new cameras. In fact, you know, I'm not. I just started, so I'm not aware of that. But I do, I am aware that we do have cameras throughout our facilities, and they are one of those things that are sometimes necessary. So we actually have instances, in fact, we've had a few even just recently, that we refer to those cameras in order to determine what happened and how to best make sure that our users of these facilities, the residents and such, are kept safe, because that's our number one priority, is make sure everyone's safe. But we can certainly look into whether or not we need to have the signage up, and perhaps we can even, if necessary, Russ could, or, I can't see where you're looking to... No, I'm sorry, I thought you were... But we can, we can certainly follow up with you as far as to the details of that, of those cameras.
Great, thank you very much.
Of course.
The other thing is, do we know if there are other, inside other clubs have, the cameras have been installed? I mean, outside is one thing, but inside other clubs is my question.
Thank you, great. So...
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. We actually have a handful of clubs that chose to install cameras on behalf of themselves, so their membership is well aware of that. I think Lynn is going to talk about it because you installed cameras just recently. ARC has them, so those other clubs are well aware of them as far as that question is concerned.
Hi, Lynn Kellis, 129120. Yes, we do have cameras inside of the Clay Club, and there are a few reasons that we did that. One, for safety, one for security, and first off, we had had someone fall on our back patio, and we didn't have cameras back there. Luckily, she was fine. She stumbled over something, and she was absolutely fine. But when you look at how hot it is out there and our aging community, you got to be looking at everything. And with that camera there, we have it viewable from our monitor desks, our monitors can keep an eye on that to keep our people safe. Another item was, a lot of our people like to work in the evenings. In the wintertime, it gets dark very early, and they were concerned about people coming in through the back or breaking in somehow. With the cameras back there, we're able to keep an eye on that, and we just watch that very closely. We do have notification on the door that says, smile, you're on camera. The other large item that we had, or issue that we had, is we had nine different pieces within a period of about four months that disappeared. And for someone who's creating a really nice pot, they put a lot of time, effort into those things, and those pieces were just kind of walking out. So, and we were having some people from outside wandering in, thinking they could go through without an escort, and we don't allow that. So the cameras have aided in that. We've had zero pieces missing since that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
I'm just writing my name. I forgot my name.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Anybody online? Then with that, our next governing, our next meeting is the governing board workshop on October 11, 9 a.m. in this room, and our next regular meeting is October 17 at 9 a.m., also in this room. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 10:21.